Board of Alderman to order, Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 7:30 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Love-Rang and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Stand one nation.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all. Okay, as President in the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Board 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 820-0156-6657. The password is 553666. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. B, we are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at www.nashua-nh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. C, we're providing the means for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone with you in the room during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cleaver.
Here, I can hear everybody. I am alone at this moment and in the room, and I am doing social distancing.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here, I'm alone, I can hear everyone, and I am following the Governor's orders to stay home.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I can hear everyone, I'm here alone, following social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
I am here, I am alone, I can hear everyone, and I am following Governor's orders.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here, I can hear everyone, I'm by myself, and I am following the Governor's declaration to please stay at home.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here, I'm alone, I can hear everything that's going on, and I mean, it's a frickin' pandemic, so I'm staying with people.
Alderman Tenza.
I'm present, I'm alone, I can hear everybody, and I'm at home per the Governor's orders.
Alderwoman Lou.
Hello, I'm here alone, I can hear you, and I'm staying at home.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here, I'm with my wife, I'm at home, and I'm staying safer at home, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, I can hear everyone, and I am in the room alone except for this thing.
Alderman Loz.
I'm here, I'm alone, I can hear you, and I'm keeping you all safe from me.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Cleaver, excuse me.
I'm here, I'm alone, and I'm practicing social distancing, I can hear everyone.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm here, I'm alone, and I'm practicing social distancing according to the Governor.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here, I am alone, and I am practicing social distancing, and I can hear everyone. And the first thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to wish Alderman O'Brien well. He won't be with us this evening, he's a little under the weather, so my best wishes to him for a speedy recovery.
Madam President, may I just ask the clerk to note for the record that Alderman Schmidt did show the board.
Oh, you're funny, Alderman Lopez. Funny. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Good evening, Mayor, do you wish to address the board? You're on mute, Mayor.
How about now?
I can hear you now.
All right, well, Madam President, thank you very much, and it's nice to see you all on a very warm August evening. I had a few things I wanted to get into tonight. First of all, an update regarding the city's COVID-19 response. I see that Director Bagley, a public health director, is on the call, and she and the Public Health Department continue to do a very fantastic job in helping the community contain the spread of the virus. We receive periodic updates, and right now, Nash, as of yesterday, Nashville had had about eighty, excuse me, 800 cases COVID-19 positive. We have currently 34 active cases. And that involves, and we've talked about the contact tracing before, but public health works with all of those 34 patients, anybody who tests positive, and then figures out who they've contacted in the recent days, and then works with the contacts, in this case about 130, to advise them to quarantine, to get tested, and the measures that need to be taken to protect themselves and the public from the potential spread of the virus. We have accomplished a lot. The number of positive cases that we find every month is going down. Right now, we have only about two cases, positive cases, patients in the hospitals together. At more at Nashville's peak, we are in the range always, every week, of 15 to 20 cases. And of course, we only have 34 active cases because most people have recovered, and unfortunately, we've seen 41 deaths, but no one has died for over a month. This has been a great community effort. People have really taken to the masks and are wearing masks and taking other measures that protect our families, our friends, our community, because they know that that's the way to contain the spread of the virus. Now, on the agenda tonight is an amendment to the mask ordinance, which we all passed, was proposed by the Board of Health, which you all passed in recent months. The amendment would add some clarification to the mask requirement. First of all, working with the Police Department, and the Police Department has been doing a very good job of encouraging compliance without citing anyone, formally citing anyone. The ordinance would be amended to make it clear that the owner of the business, the business where public, which is open to the public, such as a store, a supermarket, and the like, has a responsibility to ensure that the people who enter the business, the customers, are wearing masks. And the reason for that is that it helps the Police Department focus on someone to, when there is a situation where people are not in compliance, helps the PD to focus on a responsible person with whom to discuss the need to ask that customers wear a mask. Number two, it does clarify some ambiguous situations, making it clear that in gyms, the user of the gym is to wear a mask going in, but when they're actually exercising, that is not a requirement. Also making it clear that in indoor and outdoor restaurant group situations, a mask is required, except when the customer is actually eating or drinking. Then, of course, a mask does not need to be required, otherwise should be worn. But in any event, this is something I suspect will be referred to committee, we can discuss it in more detail there. But again, it is part of our community's effort to make sure that we keep the community safe. As I said, this has involved a lot of public sacrifice. Many people have, you know, not going out as much, having the inconvenience of the masks, and all these sacrifices that people have made have really accomplished a lot here in Nashville in containing what could have been a much bigger outbreak. But we need to be watchful, we see what can happen in a state that opens too early, Florida, Texas, Arizona, we see as prime example. Madam President, in addition to those items, I wanted to mention the fact that the Economic Development Department has received, in the city, has received a $750,000 grant for additional loans for COVID-19 relief for small business. As you will recall, together, we enacted a COVID-19 relief fund, where we combined various federal sources of money totaling about $1.2 million. And from that fund have made around 50 grants and loans to businesses, small businesses and nonprofits. Now, with the $750,000, we'll be able to reach additional businesses, provide additional relief. And again, if the same average holds, it would be 20, 25, 30 different loans can be granted from that fund. Last meeting, Madam President, you received an update from the Assessing Department regarding the Assessing Dashboard, which, I think you saw the functionality, all the different things that the Assessing Dashboard can accomplish for the people who wish to use it. That is now online, so inactive, so anyone can use that from the public via the city website. So that was the culmination of a very big effort. Madam President, I would also like to give my best to Bill O'Brien, excuse me, to Mike O'Brien, if he is watching. Mike, if you are watching, please get, I hope you're feeling better soon. Finally, Madam President, the mother of Bill Berry, who we all know, Nancy Berry, did pass away in recent days, and I wanted to extend my condolences to Bill and Helen and their entire family. Nancy was very beloved by the family, and her passing is, of course, very sad. So that concludes my remarks, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any responses to the remarks by the Mayor? Seeing none, recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Special Board of Alderman meeting of July 14th, 2020, and the regular Board of Alderman meeting of July 4th, 2020, excepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Sarah Machant, Community Development Division Director, regarding amendment to transit advertising services, from Daniel Donovan, Chief Operating Officer, Nashville School District, regarding one-time budget funds FY21, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, from David Fredette, Treasurer-Tax Collector, regarding purchase replacement for the 2018 Ford E450 Transit Van from FY2021 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SERF.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is there anyone from the public? Not seeing or hearing anyone. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding a contract for NAI Norwood to assist as necessary on a case-by-case basis with the advisory and procurement disposition of commercial real estate.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place on file, pardon me. I've misplaced my papers.
But I can read the motion for you if you'd like.
Yes.
Motion by Alderwoman Lou to accept, place on file, and award the professional service track to assist the city as necessary on a case-by-case basis with the advisory and procurement slash disposition of commercial real estate to NAI Norwood. This is a multi-year contract and has been approved by the Finance Committee at its meeting of August 8th, 2020. By roll call. Is that your motion, Alderman Lou?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. No discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carried.
Communication from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding notice of contract change for Martini Northern relative to proceeding with a guaranteed maximum price GMP.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve the notice of contract change amendment to renovations at the Public Health Building for a guaranteed maximum price GMP of 25, 825, 625, zero cents by Martini Northern, by roll call.
So can I clarify that price?
Sure.
$2,825,000, nope.
See, at that point, it's a phone number. I apologize to the public, I've never seen a number that big.
Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Has this been referred, I mean, has this gone through a committee, the Finance Committee, for example? You know, we're talking about, you know, as Alderman Lopez mentioned, it's a big number, and I'm just wondering if a committee of the board has reviewed this.
I could defer to Mr. Cummings. Director Cummings? Mayor, do you know? I don't think it's been before a committee.
That being the case, could I move to let it be referred to the, whatever committee you feel is appropriate, Madam President, for a review and recommendation to the full board?
Madam President.
Director Cummings.
Yes, this contract has been reviewed already by the Finance Committee when we initially approved it, and it was understood at that time that we were going to be approving the full contract, and then when we arrived at a guaranteed maximum price, we would be letting you know.
Well, it's already been approved.
The full contract has been correct.
Okay.
This process has been reviewed by the Legal Department, and this is what they advised as the process.
Are you okay with that, Alderman Jettie?
Well, I appreciate that, but, you know, I would feel more comfortable if a committee reviewed this. I mean, we're agreeing to a guaranteed maximum price. I don't know about the rest of the Alderman, but I don't know that, you know, I can't, I don't feel comfortable saying that this price is appropriate. I think it should be reviewed by a committee, should be vetted before a committee. Is there any problem, is there a a
A deadline?
Time crunch that we're facing?
Yes, yes, that will cause a problem.
Okay, well, in the future, I would appreciate it if you would bring this before us before it causes the problem. You know, you're asking us to approve something. I mean, I don't know about the rest of the Alderman, but I feel I'm in a position where I'm approving something that, you know, I know it's a reduction of the full amount that originally was talked about, but I still, you know, I can't say, you know, if somebody asked me, if one of my constituents asked me, what is this, what is this all about, is this price appropriate? I really don't know, I guess I'm relying upon you, and I don't feel comfortable. I feel that, you know, that, you know, we have a process, we have committees, and when things come before the Board of Alderman, we don't, we don't, we're not supposed to be acting, you know, with a few days' notice about something based upon, you know, with all due respect, your recommendation. I think, you know, it's appropriate for a committee to review it, and, you know, if, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what the time crunch is, and but I, you know, I'm telling you how I feel, so, you know, what is the time crunch? What's going to happen if we don't approve this tonight?
Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you, and just so you know, I'm having trouble with my internet connection, so I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah, so we have deadlines, and we have the contract ready to go, and we are trying to keep on schedule. This is going to be a years-long process. If you delay this tonight, it's essentially a one-month delay before this board convenes again, and you'll push the whole project schedule. I am not the abider of the process, I'm following the process that has been previously outlined and just doing what was, you know, relayed to me. So that's, you know, just what we've done past practice, and that's why it's following this course of action.
I'm going to go to the Mayor first, and I have a lot of hands up. Mayor, may I go?
I would say that under the circumstances, it didn't seem that this was coming back to the committee a second time was really necessary because of the very substantial price reduction that we achieved. So the, this is the Public Health Building, the renovation of the Public Health Building has been in discussion for how many years? Eight years? And at the board, the city did approve a contract for the renovation work up to a maximum price of $3.6 million. And now we're in a situation where we have leased space, and we're going to move Public Health down the street, down to Main Street, for one year, and this project needs to be completed with one year, in one year, in order to get them, get them out of the leased space and back into the renovated space over at Public Health. Now, certainly, I understand Alderman Jettie's point that these matters should be reviewed by committee, but my, what I'm trying to contribute here is that the $3.6 million was reviewed by a committee, was approved by a committee, and now, as a result of Director Cummings negotiating and all the other things that have gone into this, we've reduced the price below that previously approved by the Board of Alderman by $800,000. So if we were increasing it by $800,000, I think we would have certainly thought, oh my God, this requires an explanation. But since we've reduced it by $800,000 from the figure approved by the Board of Alderman, I think everybody's assumption was, you know, that people would be comfortable with that.
Mayor, do you know when the Finance Committee approved that?
No, what, you mean the $3.6?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think I might have made the motion for that as well in the spring.
Motion for what, I'm sorry?
For the funding for that amount, because if I remember, originally, it was 1.5, and then legislation came across saying that, like, okay, there's been some changes in the project scope, and now we have to change the amount. So then earlier this year, I believe, I authored, I sponsored a motion to do that.
Okay. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, you're going to see several of these GMPs on all the projects we have going on. You're going to see one for each school. And as long as the amount, by the way, when they get that number, they predict a price for the project, then they go back and sharpen their pencils and get their actual prices when they go off the bids and everything. And if it comes in under the amount that was approved for bonding, it really shouldn't be an issue. It's not like we're trying to increase the bond, we're saving money. So it just means that the final prices that were obtained by the contract were less than was anticipated. So I don't think, you know, it needs to go back before a committee as long as it's under the bonded price, the city's saving money, and it would just be whatever discussion you would have at a committee you could have right now.
Alderman Loz.
Thank you, Madam President, I have nothing to add after the last two speakers, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I just want to say that I'm inclined at this point to leave my motion the same way it was initially proposed, but I did want to acknowledge that I see Alderman Jettie's point as well. Communication is very, very important, and I think there's a number of situations where it's extremely important for the Board of Alderman to be briefed on things, where they haven't necessarily been given all the details, or information hasn't been conveyed particularly accurately. So as a rule of thumb, there should always be willingness to communicate with the board, even if it's in written form or something along that lines, before we're expected to make a decision on something. Because while this is definitely a much lower number, and lower is good, as I understand it, we don't necessarily know if any changes to the scope of service have been made, if, like, they didn't add the elevator or any change like that. So being generally briefed on what we're being asked to vote on is at least a courtesy, which I agree, we should be extended a little bit more carefully in the future. But I'm not inclined to hold this up, because the Public Health Department is extremely important, especially now. They've long been overlooked, their needs are not, you know, ambitions, they're pretty humble, they're looking for handicap facility and facilities that are capable of handling the kind of work that they do. So I appreciate that we're actually able to address the kind of work that they do. So I appreciate that we're actually able to address this at a time where Public Health's mission is at the forefront of what our city's activities are. I don't want to hold it up. I want to make sure that we get this done.
Alderman Tenza.
Very briefly, Madam President. So I believe Director Cummings sent us all a memo on this back on July 27th, which stated that the scope of work was not going to change whatsoever with this new price. And then we also received it in the package with that Ms. Graham sent out to us. So we've had ample notice. I mean, I think anyone who would want to ask Director Cummings questions about any of this had the opportunity to do so, they could have put what they found on the record here tonight. I think we spent several minutes talking about this when there has been opportunity to get this information beforehand. So I would hope that we can move forward with this tonight and save some money for the city on this project. Thank you.
If I could follow up, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify that my point was more that we're not causing a delay when we ask for information. We're just doing our due diligence. And that should be something that we're, that city departments are happy to do. In this case, they did it. Everything should be fine. We can move forward, but as a general rule of courtesy, we should be briefed on everything we're doing. And that's an expectation all aldermen should have, that they're reviewing these processes.
Anyone else? Alderman Lou.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that, you know, the change to a contract was a little bit confusing for me and I wanted to look at the original contract to see what might have changed. So, and unfortunately, when I went to look at the original contract, I found that none of the 2020 contracts are currently on the city website. And I reached out to a couple of people about that so that I could prepare for this evening, but haven't received a response. So I think that's a broken link or, you know, just something for the efficient, you know, that should be corrected so that we can review the contracts that, you know, do the research. But if it's just a matter of we now have a guarantee, and that is the only difference is that now they're guaranteeing us that there won't be any changes to the price. Is that correct?
That's the, what did he call it?
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed maximum price.
Madam President, I can probably answer that.
Attorney Bolton.
Right now, you've got a contract which calls for a price that we won't go over. That can be amended by change order in the future as well. So if something is found that needs to be corrected, that no one currently knows about, it could be that there'll be a further change order that adds $10,000 or $20,000 or whatever number. So it's guaranteed in this contract. But it does not mean this contract can't be amended to include additional work that is not now anticipated.
Just a follow-up. For my understanding, so when we, when we enter a contract with, we enter a contract for work for the city, we don't necessarily know what the price, what the true price will be?
As with any contract, it can be amended over time. Construction contracts are complex and certainly renovations are even more complex than new construction. And we've got a contractor, actually, we have several trade contractors agreeing to do certain work for certain prices. Those all get added up. Our construction manager adds their fee, certain amount of contingency for odds and ends, and that becomes the guaranteed maximum price under the contract as it exists. It is not unlikely that in the course of doing the work that the contractor has agreed to do, something is discovered that requires additional work that the contractor has not yet agreed to do. But once we discover that, we may decide that it's better to address it now than later. Or we may essentially have little to no choice if not addressing that additional work would, would be a violation of building code. If that happens and we're requiring a contractor to do extra work, extra work begats extra pay. So we may well be in a position to negotiate how much to pay for that extra work. So if we agree to modify the contract, to amend the contract, we may in fact be paying more. Sometimes, I would say, less often, the reverse can be true. Something you think needed to be corrected when you enter into the contract, once you start removing walls and floors and ceiling tiles, you find out that something that you thought needed to be corrected and the contractor has agreed for a price to correct that, you find out, whoa, we don't need to have that done. It's in better shape than we thought it was. In which case, a change order can come along that reduces the guaranteed maximum price. So it's possible to amend a contract in either direction, to remove work or to add work. And that can be expected. If you're adding work, it costs more. If you're removing work, you can expect it to cost less.
You all said Alderman Lou?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Just a comment that I just was surprised, it's surprising to learn that before the work begins, a contractor wants to reduce the guaranteed maximum. That's all. But, um, thank you for your concise explanation, Attorney Bolton.
Yeah, I can answer that too. At the time, we enter into a contract with a construction manager, the construction manager, the design professional are estimating what areas of the work might cost. The guaranteed maximum price generally is set after bids have come in from all the trade contracts. So you get a bid from your electrical contractor and a bid from your mechanical contractor, a bid for the framing and roofing and a bid for the electrical wiring. And as I say, you add all that up. One of the jobs of the construction manager is to assist us in that process of bidding out the segments of the work to the various trade contractors. So in the construction management form, this is very typical. Contract is based on an estimate to begin with. And then the guaranteed maximum price is set after the construction manager has always already performed some of its duties.
Okay, so the motion before us is to accept, place on file and approve the guaranteed maximum price by Martini Northern by roll call. Any further discussion? Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I mean, I don't, I don't take any great pleasure in, you know, being a roadblock on these things. I take, I take my job seriously. I mean, you know, I appreciate Alderman Tenza's pointing out that there was a memo written on July 27th about this. You know, and it included, you know, 21 pages of, I think, of, of, of amounts, of, of details. I, I didn't, maybe it's, maybe it's my fault. I didn't expect that we would be voting on this tonight. I thought it would be referred to a committee. I mean, our rules, you know, section 519 of the, of the rules, national rules, national revised ordinances says that every ordinance, order or resolution will have a first reading, a second reading, and then a pass, then passage. And that after the first reading, it'll be referred to a committee. I mean, that's the, we, we as a Board of Aldermen don't make decisions by ourselves. As a whole, and we do it by, by the committee process. So, you know, maybe it was, you know, my fault for assuming that we were following the ordinances and the rules. And and, and, you know, if I'm mistaken about that, I apologize. But, you know, as, as Director Cummings pointed out in his memo, the ordinances require 5-91, you know, requires that amounts over $1 million be approved by the Board of Aldermen. What does that mean? That we just accept what, you know, what, you know, we, we have excellent people working for us. Director Cummings is one of them. And I, and I don't doubt that for a minute. But, you know, the people didn't elect us to just rubber stamp what our staff tells us, you know, is the right thing to do. We, we have an obligation to look into it ourselves. And we do that through committees. That's my only point. I'm not, I don't want to hold up the Board of Health and their moving process. But I'm not going to take the blame for this. This is not my doing. I'm not the one. I mean, you know, this could have been presented to the Finance Committee. A special meeting could have been called by the mayor. And this could have been vetted by the Finance Committee. And tonight, we would have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. But that wasn't done. You know, it's just being presented to us. And I apologize. But I cannot support this without what I think is, is the proper following of the ordinances and the rules and, and the proper procedure.
Alderman Jettie, the Finance Committee did approve this contract. They approved it up to 3.6 million. It's, it's been to committee. I, I don't understand why you're thinking this is just getting passed.
Madam President, the, the price has been reduced by 800,000.
Right.
I don't know if under the circumstances, the price could be reduced by a million. How do we know? Do you know? I don't think so. We're just, you know, we're saying, oh, the price is less. Isn't that terrific? Maybe it could be more. Maybe it could be less than that. I'm not saying it should be. I'm not saying it can be. I'm, I'm just pointing out that we, that we are, in my opinion, we, we are not doing our jobs. And so, I mean, I understand that most of you disagree with me, but that's how I feel. And I apologize for it, but that's.
You don't owe anybody an apology, Alderman Jettie, but you're right. Some of us don't agree with it. I don't agree with it. And I'm entitled to not agreeing with it as much as you're entitled to your opinion on the matter. Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I, I agree with, I guess, Alderman Lopez earlier, a brief synopsis would have been nice on the, with the agenda. I think that would have helped. Maybe going forward, we can do that. However, we got the agenda on Friday. Friday evening. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, all day today. Why is the question being asked tonight at the meeting? Is my question. The, we, it is our responsibility when we read the agenda, which comes out on Friday, to look at it, but not only to look at it, but to understand it. First of all. And if we have any questions, to ask them. So it probably would have been appropriate to ask Director Cummings ahead of time what these, what your questions might have been. Secondly, we're not violating any ordinances. And we're not violating the rules on the board either because this isn't an ordinance and it's not a resolution. It's a contract. And the contract already came before the Finance Committee and was voted on. This is a reduction in that contract which has to be voted on by the entire Board of Aldermen. So I can see where the mayor and Director Cummings had the thought process that because it was a reduction, that it shouldn't have to go back before the Finance Committee because it was a reduction. And I understand the point that, well, how do we know if it was the appropriate reduction? But again, that is something that should have been asked ahead of time, particularly because the agenda shows that it was intended to be passed this evening. So I would hope that the aldermen, when you have a question on things, that you ask the question ahead of time. Because I think that it prevents things like.
I talked to Jared Jettie yesterday on the phone that night about multiple things in every process of.
I think, Madam President. Madam President.
I'm going to call on the mayor so he can, and then Alderman Kelly.
All right. I, I want to clarify what I said before because the Finance Committee approved this, I think, I think a year ago. So the, and the project has been in the works for a long time. So I'm trying to rely on my memory about this. But I misspoke when I said this will realize an $800,000 savings. It is $800,000 less than the bonded amount, but we may have other contracts which add on to this one. So I want to correct that. This isn't necessarily an $800,000 saving. But the contract was approved by the Board of Aldermen, excuse me, by the Finance Committee, I believe sometime last summer. And then in the course of the intervening year, we arrived at this guaranteed maximum price, which is $800,000 less than the bond authorization. But there might be additional, there will be additional work required. I, you know, I think that in the future, in a situation like this, if you want to get an explanation, I, you know, I'd be glad to provide it for you. I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide it. I think this is, the project is so longstanding. It's been going on for years. We did, we were before the committee a year ago and you know, it just seemed, I think this has been through legal and, you know, it just seemed like it was, there wouldn't be any issues. Now, given what Alderman Jettie has raised, if this happens again, I, we'd be glad to come back, you know, no problem. In fact, we've got three other contracts on here. The, the the one about the Realty Services has gone to the committee and been discussed. The others have not, except in concept with the board and with the, the, the subsequent two regarding the Riverfront. Those have been, those have been discussed in concept with the board, you know, as a whole and also with infrastructure. But given this discussion, we'd be glad to bring those to the Finance Committee and discuss them in detail. In this, and I, so I'm asking you to defer those contracts so we don't have the same discussion. But I think in the future, we'd be glad to come back. In this instance, unfortunately, there is some time pressure because Public Health can only be out of that building for a year. Certainly, we'd be glad to come to the Finance Committee and justify the 2.8 million, no problem. But to hold it up for a month would be a problem. Could be a problem because then we don't finish and then we, you know, we don't have a place for them at the end of the lease. Anyway, I apologize for the confusion.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I, I don't know if I'm too dark. I thought my arm was getting tired there, but um, the lighting here. Thank you. Um, so I, I had a couple of comments just for the conversation here. I think that the reason that this is coming up is there have been other instances in which we've suspended the rules and it hasn't gone to committee. And so I don't want to speak for the other Aldermen here, but I do feel that, you know, that's happened a few times and it feels like we're not doing our due diligence, having those conversations. In this case, as we've been assured that the actual scope has not changed, I think we should move this forward. Uh, but I think we need to continue to, to bring these things out, because there were a couple of things that said like, oh, just because it costs less, we should go forward with it. But we don't know what, why it's costing less. We don't have any understanding fully about what is going on with this. And sometimes costing less means we're cutting corners and that may not be the best way to handle a project. So I mean, I, I have full faith in the, in the departments that work on this and the contractors that we hire. But our job is to make sure that these projects are being looked at with a fine tooth comb and that we can go back to our constituents and explain what's going on with things. So I think any, any place that we can have transparency, we need to have it. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is just a, a way of working in the chamber that I think would help address this. A lot of times, uh, there have been other Aldermen in the past who would either be the chair of the committee that this went through or the person who is the sole sponsor would, would make the motion and then they would speak to it. And so they could quickly kind of give us a quick synopsis of what it was and maybe nip some of these conversations in the bud, because we already have that information, not just for us, but, but also for the constituents we're watching. So I think that that, that could be a potential way of us just working through it in the chamber uh, as, as we continue to work through all this stuff. So, thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Okay, um, first of all, I, I kind of feel offended that someone would make the statement on this board that a rubber stamp, that really disturbs me, number one. And I said, but um, we did look at this and, and I know that mayor said it was probably last spring, but I was saying in my mind, I said, no, it was several months ago. I know we did vote on this in the Finance Committee, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, um, once we were assured that nothing had changed, I feel as though we should have had a different look at what Jettie was speaking of, Alderman Jettie was speaking of. Okay, on the same token, I do feel as though he had one point that maybe we could have had one sheet that just said, um, there's no changes in the scope of work. However, but the price is better. We know we're going through a pandemic. We know that people need to work. We know that companies are still trying to stay afloat of everything. So with that said, I would expect that it would come back cheaper. So, and, and I, because I come from a market where, you know, I'm used to changes in the market really affects what people want to charge you for the work that they're going to do. So I didn't think it was unusual, usual on a personal note to see that the price was different, given we're in a pandemic. I'm definitely going to vote for this. We need to move on. The Health Department has been waiting for years to get what they need to really be the best that they can be, which they're great anyway. So I am going to vote for this, and I think this is a great opportunity for all of us as Aldermen to stand behind our Health Department for a change and vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Uh, yeah, just for some not so recent history, when I first, literally, I think the first motion that I endorsed uh, as an Alderman was for the Health Department. And I made the mistake of not fully researching exactly what I was endorsing. I got called out on it by Alderman Siegel. So I went back and I did the research so that I was able to speak to it. So in deference to Alderman Kelly's observation, we do have a process for this. So if we are asked to endorse something, um, either in our role as liaison or if we're the author of it, then we should also expect a little bit of attention from the city departments that are relevant to it, to make sure that we're fully briefed to answer these questions. That way they don't get, um, put in the spotlight in the middle of a meeting, um, which may be something that's happening here. Um, and then also I wanted to point out, um, I, I don't have a lot of good senses, but hearing is definitely one of the few that, that remains intact. So, uh, for those of us who heard, uh, Director Cummings say that he had spoken to Alderman Jettie yesterday while his phone was muted. I think, I just want to remind everybody that he's probably having connection issues and probably was called by, I think the mayor was unmuted at the time. So that was probably where that was coming from.
Alderman Kelly.
Hope to put this to bed after this. I know we've had a rigorous discussion. Uh, my request would just be that we think about timing, um, of contracts and when they need to be approved, so we don't get under the gun like this. Uh, you know, one of the Aldermen pointed out that we have from Friday till now to ask questions. But in the mayor's own remarks, he said, we've been working on this for over a year. So this could have been brought to us a month earlier or, you know, give us a little bit of time to make sure that we know what we're, what we're approving.
Well, I, you know, Director Cummings did send out a memo and, you know, this did go to finance. So I don't think we've done anything lax or, I mean, the, the information was available and, and he did send something out in July, which was only, you know, three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. So in his defense, I think he did what he should have done. If we wanted more from him, we could have simply asked, and I'm sure he would have been more than happy to give you any information you need. So, but, you know, I, I do understand that, you know, if we're supposed to vet something, we vet something and, and we should be doing that. But this was passed, but, I mean, this went through finance. So Alderman Dow.
Alderman Dow. I've been doing this kind of work with the city for twenty years. And the, very simply, the process is when we have a project, we hire an architect. The architect determines the work that needs to be done. Then your construction manager goes out and solicits bids for each piece of the work. And when that, that's a contract and anybody that's on the joint special has seen a number of these already on just the Fairgrounds project. We approve that contract and that's what they're going to do the work for. When all of those are added up, if it's under, and, and by the way, when, when we first do all those estimates, they, they determine, the construction manager is going to determine what they think it's going to cost to do the architect's work. And, you know, they make sure it's as close to what's going to happen as possible. Then when I go out for bids, the bids come in and has been the case in the school projects for most every time, the bids come in in conglomerate underneath what we had to bond for and what the cost of the project was going to be. So, uh, when all of those bids are in and they say they're going to do the work for that price, then we can go out with a guaranteed price and maximum price. And as Attorney Bolton said, now, if they start doing the work and it goes up or down in the process, you have to do a change order and that has to be approved by whoever has responsibility for that project. In the schools, it's the joint special. All right. And, and they can't do anything without that signed change order. And the only time that it would cause a major thing to come back to the Board of Aldermen would be if all of a sudden, when we add everything up, it's over the amount that we've approved for bonding. In this case, we're under the amount we prove of bonding. So when they went out to get the work and they got all the bids, it came in less than we thought. So there should be no issues. There's, there's no change in work, because the architect, whoever the committee is that's seeing, was seeing this project, the architect designed what needed to be done. Construction manager would have good bids and all the bids are in and signed, it's less than we expected.
Y'all set, Alderman Dow?
I hope so.
Okay, the motion is to approve the change, the contract change for Martini Northern relative to the guaranteed maximum price. Further discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and one nay.
And that motion carries.
Communications been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding contract amendment for professional engineering services related to the Nashville Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project, VHB Inc.
I just wanted to touch base with the mayor, see if this is one that can go to committee.
Uh, yes, Madam President, please send this to the Finance.
And, and what about the next few mayor? I mean, there is a Hainer Swanson, Riverfront Plan.
The Hainer Swanson can go to the committee.
And the SURF.
The SURF is of course a note of, well, that's pretty self-explanatory, but that could go to the committee. We're trying to replace a police vehicle there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, but the Riverfront contracts can go to the committee, no problem.
Okay, very good. So I will, uh.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Do you want to send the SURF one to budget? Uh, we're having a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. So I will, I will, without objection, move to send the Contract Amendment for Professional Engineering Services related to the Riverfront Project. I will send that to, um, Planning and Economic Development.
Communication from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding contract amendment for Professional Engineering Services related to the Nashville Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project, Hainer Swanson, Inc.
Without objection, I will send that one to, um, the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
Communications been received from David G. Fedet, Treasurer-Tax Collector, regarding purchase replacement of one two thousand and nineteen Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle from the FY two thousand and twenty-one Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, SURF.
Without objection, I'll send that to the Budget Committee. Uh, petition.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed to the Business and Industrial Development Authority, Jack Tully, Post Office Box Six Hundred Nashville, for a term to expire September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Mark Rollman of Seventy Crestwood Drive Nashville, for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Energy and Environment Committee, Anita Adicalla of Fifteen Taylor Street Nashville, for a term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Master Plan Committee, Mary Ann Malyse-Golia, Two Amble Road Nashville, Omar Jeffrey, Five Pollockin Drive Nashville, Gloria McCarthy, Sixty-five Musket Drive Nashville, Peter Schaefer, Fifteen East Street Nashville, Jean Porter, Seventy-seven Cricket Street Nashville, John Spiro Sabet, Thirty-nine Coburn Avenue Nashville, Marjorie Bollinger, Sixty-seven Canongate Three Room Nashville, and Amber Log of Twenty Lock Street Nashville, to the Mind Falls Park Advisory Committee, Greg Andeskevich of Three Carroll Way Lane Nashville, for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the National Airport Authority, David Heath, Seven Casey Circle Nashville, for a term to expire August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, to the National Arts Commission, Hall of Flame of Twenty-eight Lutheran Drive Nashville, for a term to expire April first, two thousand and twenty-two, and Judith Carlson, Fifteen Manchester Street Nashville, for a term to expire April first, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Nashville City Cleaning Board, Michael Peterson, Eleven Delaware Road Nashville, for a term to expire January first, two thousand and twenty-four, Scott LeClaire, Ten Day Lily Drive Nashville, for a term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, Lawrence Hirsch, Twelve Salmon Brook Drive Nashville, for a term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and Maggie Harper, Three Tap Street, for a term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Tax Increment Financing Board, Sarah Machat, Two Twenty-nine Manchester Street Nashville, Chris Lewis, Six Seventy North Commercial Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, David Fedet, Two Twenty-nine Manchester Street Nashville, Eric Drawt, Fifty-seven Main Street Nashville, Tim Cummings of Two Twenty-nine Main Street Nashville, Michael Sorato, Four Water Street Nashville, and Tia Phillips of Two Clock Tower Place Nashville, all for terms to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the, um, appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Joint Convention with Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
Request from Jeffrey L. Snow, Superintendent of Edgewood Cemetery, to meet in joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the trustees of the Edgewood Cemetery for Tuesday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty. It's actually going to be September ninth. Cause September eighth is election day. So, uh, September ninth, two thousand and twenty, at seven thirty via a Zoom teleconference meeting. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the, the report of the July thirteenth Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. Finance, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. Committee on Infrastructure, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, Committee on Infrastructure, accepted and placed on file. Budget Review Committee, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. Finance, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the August fifth, two thousand and twenty, Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Um, unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. Two thousand and forty-four, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Alderman Cleaver, do you have a motion? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes, move to place on file and approve and place on file as stated.
Okay, so motion by Alderman Cleaver for final pass of Resolution twenty dash forty-four by roll call. Is there discussion of that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty forty-four is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2045, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $190,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services CARES Act funding into public health and community services grant activity, FY 2020, Public Health Crisis Response.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Move for final passage of R 2004-5 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 20-45 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2046, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $159,460 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development CARES Act funding into public health and community services grant activity, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPA.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I motion for final passage of R-20-046 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2046 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2047, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $162,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, FY 21 and FY 22 HIV Prevention Grant.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
I motion for final passage of R 20-047 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-47 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2048, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $99,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, FY 21 and FY 22 STD Prevention Grant.
Alderman Clea-
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R 20-048 by roll call, please.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 20-48 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2049, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $97,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, FY 21 and FY 22 Immunization Program of Greater Nashua.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 2049 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2049 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2050, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $52,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22 Tuberculosis Program of Greater Nashua.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R 2050 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-50 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2051, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $45,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, FY 21 and FY 22 Healthy Homes and Lead Poisoning Case Management.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Jettie, I don't see him.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
All right, there you are.
I didn't, I didn't know I was on the script.
Okay. Do you have a motion for Resolution 20-51?
I do. I move for final passage by roll call.
Thank you. Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-51 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 2052, relative to the acceptance of donated materials and services worth $16,650 from Edgestone Properties, Inc., to be used towards painting the exterior of the city-owned building at 57 Gilson Road.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move for final passage of R 2052 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 20-52 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O 2024, removing authorization for right-turn-only lane on Pine Hill Road at its intersection with Sharon Avenue.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to, I move for final passage of Ordinance 20-024 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 20-24 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance O 2026, removing handicapped parking spaces in front of 3 Beacon Street and 9 and 11 Mount Pleasant Street.
Alderman Clea-
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to motion for final passage of O-20-026 by roll call, and if appropriate, I'd like to make a comment.
Alderman Clea-
Thank you very much, Madam President. I brought this forward because of hearing from constituents that these, that there were handicapped spots in front of these, these properties of 3 Beacon Street, 9 and 11 Mount Pleasant Street that were no longer being used, and where parking is always such a premium everywhere within the city. We brought this forward and so on. And the fact that this existed is a good thing because they were very well needed at the time that they were requested and so on. But I think we need to review our process as to when we do approve special spaces, for whatever the reasons are, as to a sunset or a revisit of them. Because many of these, from what I've heard from the residents in the area, is that there were years that they weren't being used. So I'd like to just kind of put that out there as, as food for thought that we should probably review the current ones, if they're still needed. And perhaps there are others that are needed, but that's why I brought this forward. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Motion is for final passage. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza-
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 20-26 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance O 2027, authorizing a left-turn-only lane at the intersection of West Pearl Street and Elm Street.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O 2027 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Clea-
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly-
Yes.
Alderman Dowd-
Yes.
Alderman Karen-
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons-
Yes.
Alderman Lopez-
Yes.
Alderman Tenza- Alderman Tenza, I believe you're on mute?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lou-
Yes.
Alderman Jettie-
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt-
Yes.
Alderman Laws-
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver-
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright-
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire-
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 20-27 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R twenty fifty-six relative to the transfer of one million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from Department one ninety-four contingency account seven zero one one two contingency for educational priorities to various school department accounts.
Any other sponsors? Alderman Gathwright, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver.
Laws.
Sorry?
Alderman Laws, sorry.
Alderman Laws, Alderman Clea. Okay, given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R twenty fifty-seven, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of twenty million dollars to refund all or a portion of certain outstanding bonds of the city in order to achieve interest cost savings.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dowd, Alderman Clea, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Laws. And myself, oh, and Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman meeting, public hearing on Monday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty at seven P M.
First reading of Resolution R twenty fifty-eight, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the National Board of Police Commissioners and Teamsters Local six-three-three from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt.
Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R twenty fifty-nine, authorizing the sale of city real property located at one forty-one to one forty-three Burke Street, MAP eleven, lot one fifty-eight to Burke Street Nashua LLC.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Dowd and myself. Oh, and Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Tenza. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Architecture and the Nashua City Planning Board.
First reading of Resolution R twenty sixty, relative to the approval of the purchase of one transit van from the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, CERF, during fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Clea, Alderman Gathwright, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R twenty sixty-one, relative to the supplemental appropriation of sixty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars of unanticipated revenue into fund seven zero two-six Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman meeting, public hearing on Monday, August twenty-fourth at seven P M.
First reading of Resolution I twenty sixty-two, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, twenty nineteen justice assistance grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors?
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clea and myself, oh, and Alderman Cleaver. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R twenty sixty-three, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of the sum of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety State Homeland Security Grant Program into police grant activity, twenty nineteen Homeland Security Grant Program.
Additional sponsors?
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. Before reading Resolution twenty dash sixty-four, I'd like to note that the position should have been in Department one oh three, the legal department, and will be amended throughout the document to reflect that it should have been in legal, not the city clerk's department.
First reading of our twenty sixty-four, relative to the appropriation of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred dollars from Department one ninety-four contingency account seven zero one hundred, general contingency into various accounts in Department one oh three, legal.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Lopez and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O twenty twenty-nine, supplemental requirements relative to face coverings.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleaver and myself. Alderman Laws.
Yes, please.
Yep, Alderman Laws as well. Okay, period for general public comment, is there anyone that wants to address the board?
Madam President, I don't believe you made the assignment on twenty, ordinance twenty twenty-nine.
You're right.
And if I might, would I suggest it also be referred to the Board of Health.
Very good, I will, given its first reading, assign it to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and the Board of Health. Thank you, Attorney Bolton. Public comment, is there anyone that like, would like to address the board?
Hello?
Hello? Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Lori Ordolano, forty-one Berkeley Street.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to address some of the comments made at the July fifteenth Finance Committee Meeting. I was really disappointed in the conversation with the mayor, the talk that the mayor gave to the committee and Ms. Kleiner regarding the cost of the assessing issues, and I saw it as very heavy blame laid on me for costing the city so much, and the mayor made a comment that we couldn't find a chief because of all the allegations, I, I believe he felt many unfounded, that were pointed at assessors in Nashua for failure to do their job. And he said the assessing community consists of a very small group of people that all know each other and talk, and they all believe that these actions by this individual are unfounded and they don't want to come here to work because they're going to be accused of the same thing Nashua assessors have been accused of. And I want to share a little bit more truth on that issue and a story that I want you to understand. We had a deputy assessor named Andrew Lemay who worked in Nashua for a number of years. He left around two thousand and twelve, and he has since retired, and he's retired into a community up in Concord. And he was talking to an individual that I happened to have an acquaintance with, and they met up there because they had moved into the retirement community. And this, and Andrew explained that he had been an assessor down in Nashua. The individual knew the issues going on in Nashua, and they struck up a conversation. And Andrew Lemay's statement to this man, which can be verified, were that, was that, you know, the mayor appointed a woman who was completely unqualified for the job, and now it's all political. And that there was a coordinator in there, a woman who had the best interests of the taxpayers at heart. She really watched out for the people, and she was removed, and he was referring to Cheryl Wally. And that's a story with somebody who worked down here, and he still has close relationships with Greg Turges, Louise Brown. Where does he get his information from? And he's not the first one I have heard stories like that from. So when the mayor tells you that it's a small community, and they all talk, and they don't want to come down here because Lori Ordolano has just leveled charges, you know, and done things by going to the state that make it undesirable for them to work here. I think some of them didn't want to come here to work with somebody as unqualified as the mayor picked. And it was his choice to do that. I also felt Alderman Lou was not told the truth in that meeting when she raised some good questions. She asked how long the situation with not having somebody qualified in the office had gone on. And the administration or Ms. Kleiner and the mayor explained, you know, since the decertification of Greg Turges. That's not the case. This problem has existed for fifteen months when the mayor chose to put him as a supervisor. Because he was automatically in there supervising his brother's work, Gary Turges. So Greg Turges was supervising Gary Turges's work. Because under the state statutes, abatements cannot be brought to the Board of Assessors unless a certified supervisor is reviewing the work and verifying the work done. And his brother Gary was bringing abatements forward last year in twenty nineteen and again in twenty twenty. So I have a huge issue with that. Also, Mike Mandile, who was not a certified supervisor until March of this year. He was a property assistant, not a certi, not, excuse me, not supervisor, not a certified property assessor. He was a property assistant in training. The state law says he is not allowed to present abatements or opinions of value to a Board of Assessors. He's not qualified. Greg Turges assigned sixty-five abatements to him last year to present to the board. Completely unqualified, that should have never happened. It happened again in March before he even had his certification. And the story goes on. So in my opinion, the mayor's very excited about taking this gentleman back when, when his supervisory certification is restored. Uh, you know, he has the right to do that, and he hasn't recognized any of the problems that really have existed with the work of this individual and the work product. And he can come back, but rest assured, Mr. Mayor, we have the right as the public to watchdog the work product of this individual, especially given the history. I just stumbled onto something this weekend that is another eye-opener on paperwork with this gentleman that is going up to the state, tired of finding it, and it never seems to end. I am so disappointed that our mayor could not shoulder any of the responsibility for what went on here, and that he put it all on me, that I created this burden. And his closing line was just beautiful. Have the taxpayers been forced to pay a lot of money because of what this woman has done? Yes, they have. You know, I expect more out of my leadership, and not just from a mayor, but my Board of Aldermen as well. And too many of you went lockstep with him, there are few of you who didn't. So, and Ms., and when you put that position in place, when you decided Ms. Kleiner would take over in April of twenty-eight nineteen, Ernie Jettie was the only one who spoke against it, strongly concerned that we didn't have somebody qualified. Ms. Kleiner made it clear that she would let the board know. She said, I can promise you that if I feel, if I ever feel that my, that my effectiveness or that I'm hurting the city or the value to our residents in any way, I will let you know, I will let the mayor know immediately.
Mr. Ordolano, you're going to have to wrap up now, please.
Okay, well, all I'm going to tell you is she never did that. She brought forth in the September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen meeting, a one-liner saying we're going to look at a chief again, out of nowhere, no reason for it. Brought it forth in the November twel, uh, twelve, twenty nineteen meeting of the Board of Aldermen, and no discussion on why she felt we needed it. And everyone just stamped the stamp and rubber stamped the money to get this position in without her ever explaining what the deficits were of not having the position.
Okay, you're going to have to wrap up now.
I am wrapping up.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Madam President, if I may, it looks like there are a couple other people who would, would like to speak.
Yeah. Beth Skar and Charlie Sherman both on waiting to speak.
Okay. Ms. Skare?
Hi, yeah, it's Beth Skare, East Hobart Street. Um, I'm just, I just wanted to say that I'm very concerned about this, these changes to the mask ordinance. Requiring business owners and managers to enforce the mask ordinance puts them in a very tough position. You know, it's a very sensitive issue for people who can't or won't wear a mask, and that just makes them the villain, and they've already been struggling, you know, under this, these economic slowdowns. And I, I just think it's really cowardly to put them in this position of, of having to enforce a very, what is a very unpopular ordinance contrary to what the mayor said. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman? Did you wish to address the board? Okay, that's the end of public comment, if there's no one else. Remarks by members of the board? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, just real quickly, uh, earlier this month, I had an opportunity to use the hazarded waste cleanup activity that I hadn't used in quite a while, it was near the park and ride, near Make-It Labs. And I, I have to say that it, it went flawlessly with one minor exception. The, so many people there that had backed up the traffic on Darlington Street and, and it was had one whole lane blocked, which was a problem, but other than that, it worked like a charm. It went fairly quickly, but there were a lot of people and, and I, my kudos go out to the, the people that ran that and the police detachment that was there directing traffic. They all did a great job.
You're on mute.
I live near the airport, I had to put myself on mute. Alderman Clea and then Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll, I'll be quick here, I'd just like to send my condolences also to the, the family and friends of Nancy Berry. Bill Berry and Helen Honero are constituents of mine, and I, I know a loss, especially during this time, having just experienced one myself is extraordinarily hard. But when it's a parent, it, it's truly rough, so my condolences to the family.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank, thank you, few things, I, I too want to express my condolences to Bill Berry and Helen Honero and family for their loss. And I also want to take this to address a situation that happened over the weekend in my neighborhood. And at the corner of Lake and Chestnut Street, early morning Saturday, there was a fatal accident there. This is right around the corner from where I live, and a young gentleman lost his life who was on a motorcycle there. That intersection has been a problem for quite a while. And it, it really is, was heartbreaking driving by the other night seeing the, there was a group of friends and family that gathered there, and to see that was really heartbreaking and not something that I had expected. And so I, I'm going to, I, I spoke with Alderman Lou earlier, I meant to reach out to Alderman Lopez, but I, what I want to do is ask the traffic department to look at that intersection and see what we can do to make that a safer, a safer place. I myself have seen many accidents there, and this one unfortunately was fatal, so I think we need to do something, so I'm going to be asking the traffic department to look at that. On much happier notes, we of course were, I am very excited that Kamala Harris is chosen by Vice President to be the nominee, being a lifelong Democrat, I think it's great that our, the Democratic Party is the party of progression and is the party that represents all of America not only by saying it, but by showing it. The last thing I want to talk about is the, we have, I talked to the, my goodness. I talked to Sue, Sue Lovering today, the city clerk, about absentee ballots, and I have some good news. And the details are to come, but the good news is, is that with regard to an absentee ballot, we are able to get a drop-off location at City Hall so that it would be a secured location where folks can take their absentee ballot and drop it off. And this is important because in the, as people have noticed on the news, we've been having backups nationwide with the postal service, and people are afraid of mail-in voting because of issues with the mail getting there on time. So what this option will allow Nashua residents to do is be able to vote absentee and drop their ballot off directly to City Hall in a secured manner, twenty-four seven, and basically eliminate the postal service out of the equation. It's tremendous news, it's really, really good news. It's really, really good news for those who are affected by the COVID nineteen and don't feel that they want to vote in person. We have, we are doing everything that we can here in this city to make sure that people have the right to go out and vote and that they can exercise that right. And no, in addition to that, that their vote is going to be counted, and it's going to be counted fairly. I think that's extremely important. Our city clerk does a tremendous job, and we here in Nashua truly do the best job of any jurisdiction in the United States. I'd put us up against anyone. I know we're number one. So thank you to the clerk for everything that you do, and, um, you know, let's hope for a smooth, a smooth election process. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Alderman Karen?
Oh, I'll be quick. Here's my good wishes for Alderman O'Brien, my favorite Alderman, to get well soon. And the city clerk has done a tremendous job. I'm getting messages constantly from constituents saying everything is running so smoothly. I know they're busy, but they're taking care of us. And to the family, friends, and everybody in the, in the state, the passing of Sylvia Gale was a very sad, sad event, and like to send my condolences as well to Alderman Harriet Gathright, who has lost family members. Seems like a really difficult time and a good time to be kind. Thank you.
Alderman Karen?
Oh, thank you so much. First of all, my get well wishes to Alderman O'Brien and my condolences to the Berry family. I've known Bill Berry for thirty years. The other thing, uh, some happy news. Normally Alderman Melizagola gives this out, but back-to-school event will be taking place, although we're doing it a little bit differently. So the event is set for next Thursday, August twentieth, from four-thirty to six-thirty at the following schools, Fairgrounds Elementary, Elm Street Middle School, and Amherst Street School. We could not have the large crowd at the library, so we decided that we would pick a central school. Unfortunately, Fairgrounds Middle School and Penner Chuck are being repaired, so we chose Amherst Street and Fairgrounds Elementary for those areas. And every principal will be there at a table, and the high schools will be there, United Way, and the Board of Health will be there handing out supplies and notices as well as the library. And the back hacking will take place next Monday at Amherst Street School. Unfortunately, because of the COVID problem, RSDP was not invited because that is a very vulnerable population within the community. But we have about twenty people that are willing to spread out and help us get those two thousand bags packed. And we hope that, I'm sure the mayor and Board of Aldermen will take a run-through and see their areas, and we're looking for a good day, not hot like today, but a nice day. And finally, I would like to wish my husband a happy birthday, because we, today's his birthday, and he's somewhere else in the house, and I'm here listening to a wonderful Board of Aldermen meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I thought I was Jan's favorite Alderman, so I'm, I'm a little offended right now, but in all seriousness, I wanted to just thank Ms. Lovering's department for all the work they're doing. It's gonna be a heavy lift this year with COVID and the response. And if I could, through you, to her, ask if there's anything she wants to impart to anyone who's looking to put, put in a request for absentee ballot or where it might be in the process. I just thought that might be a good use of a couple of minutes here.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. If I may just take a moment to say, the guidance that came down from the Secretary of State's office today is that the hand delivery of absentee ballots may take place at City Hall. What we've arranged for is the greeter in the back of Elm Street entrance to accept those ballots in hand, who will then place it into the drop-off box. That you cannot just simply drop it off. Um, and we ask that you bring a photo ID, and if you're dropping it off as the delivery agent, we have forms here for you to complete as well. So the greeter in the back is here between, I believe, eight and four, and you can come up, or you can mail that as well to us, or call our office, and we will meet you outside between eight and five and pick that up, somebody from our office. On absentee request ballots, the requests are coming in fast and furious. You may download that form on our website. You may email our office. You may call us. You may email us those forms, drop them off, as I said, or mail them to us. We've received about, I believe, fifteen hundred for the state primary, and in twenty sixteen, we only had six hundred, and we're close to two thousand for the general election, and we probably have another eight hundred or so to enter. So we ask for your patience, but we are getting them out. The ballots are here. Um, and the same goes for voter registration. We continue to make appointments in person, but for those who feel uncomfortable in voting and registering prior to the election in person, contact us, email, phone, um, the website, and we will mail you the forms for you to complete in the comfort of your home, and then you can mail them back to us.
Thank you so much, Sue.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. So it takes a couple of us to make up for all the, all the great things that Alderman Melizagola has been involved with over the years. So I just want to remind people too that even though the pandemic is going on, the city and City Arts Nashua is still hosting the Art Symposium. I believe this year they'll be live streaming some of the artists as they're working, so if you can't go down in person and see them at the Pickers Building, you'll be able to watch them create their pieces of art that will be displayed in here in the city within the next, over the next years. Then also wanted to express my condolences to the Berry family and the Gale family. Very, very important people, and, you know, they, they set an example, I think, for, for a lot of us as far as what activism means and what, you know, how we should all aspire to be leaders within the community. Thanks.
Any announcements?
No, I had, I had comments.
Oh, you had a comment? I'm sorry. Alderman Gathright?
Okay. I want to express my condolences to the Berry family, but as well to all the rest of us that have lost loved ones, including Patricia Cleve, Alderman Cleve. I also want to express the, the loss of Sylvia Gale, who really has been, for me, a very good friend for over twenty years. And we are working on her celebration here in Nashua. And right now is, her birthday is September the sixth, which is late, which is based on Labor Day, and it's on a Sunday, and we are planning something in Greeley Park, just so you know. And there's more to come, and I'll make sure that Alderman gets the invite for that. Um, because she's, um, she's worked with our city government, she's worked with our state government, she's worked with our nonprofits, and particularly those of color. You know, it's just a tremendous, strong supporter for undoing racism. And that's what I, very strong supporter of those type of situations and low-income people and those types of things. So I'm really gonna miss Sylvia, literally, because I worked with her as one of the commissioners for the Status of Women, and she was our executive assistant at that time. So we really go back, even before that, we go back with Southern Hampshire, we go back Unity years ago, when we had a medical staff within organizations that actually did HIV AIDS here in the Greeley Park as well as the different bars. So, you know, she's truly gonna be missed tonight, you know, and I feel for her partner and her daughter. And more recently, I didn't hear good things about, she's been taking care of her daughter for the last year, but I, I'm hearing that her last, her daughter's last testing were not well. So just, just much prayer for the Gale family and her partner as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any comments before we move on to committee assignments? Okay, I mean, committee announcements. Does anyone have a committee announcement? Alderman Dow?
Yes, tomorrow night, we're gonna have a special budget meeting, and we're gonna be discussing only two things at this point. One will be the R twenty oh twenty-eight, and the other will be the, the police surf vehicle. The other items that were all on the agenda tonight will be addressed at the regular budget meeting later in the month. So it's seven o'clock on Zoom, and we'll have a, a discussion on, on, of that action.
Alderman Tenza?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. P E D C will be meeting next Tuesday, August eighteenth. Anyone who's interested in reviewing the contracts for the Riverfront Master Plan should please plan to attend. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Alderman Clemmons, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
You're fourteen years, it don't know.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at nine thirty-three PM. Thank you, everyone.